There we go. So, welcome everyone to the Wyoming Culture Change Coalition's Special Session for Activities, Recreation, Life Enrichment. And some of you are from other disciplines. And do you know what? That is so cool. I really mean that. Because the more we all learn about all the culture change practices and all the regulations that support them, the stronger you are as a team. And everything dovetails, right? How, we can't really have a Fall Committee because so many things enter in. We can't really have a Skin Committee we've learned because you can't just talk about skin. Isn't that true? So, welcome everyone. My name is Carmen Bowman. It's my privilege to get to work with Wyoming in this project. And I have so much to share with you. So, culture change, what in the world is it? First of all, I believe it's still the answer. I'm going to tell you why. And second of all, what it is, is changing institutional culture. Let's face it, everyone. Most people in America don't want to live in a nursing home. We all know that. And did you know there are many, many changes you can make to your culture that actually don't even cost money at all? That's become my message. So, everyone can hear it and take it in and actually do it, right? People want to live where there's not an institutional culture. And people want to work where there is not an institutional culture. And another way to say this is a famous quote from our culture change movement, "No longer are the needs of the institution going to come before the needs of the individuals who live there." Ah, won't that be big if we make it to that? So, carry that with you, everybody. And believe it or not, it's also reflected in regulation. I'm going to show you some today. There's even more than what I'm showing you today. Another neat way to think of changing institutional culture is to move away from institution. I have a friend who says, "Move towards home-like." But notice the words, everyone. We don't want "home-like." I don't want "home-like," do you? And we want to keep moving towards home. So, from institution, it's okay, guys, to start turning your back on institution and instead to start turning toward and doing what would be true home. What would be normal? That's what we're going to talk about. Here we go. So, first of all, because people want to live in a home and not an institution where they are honored and their preferences are known and they're given their choice, guess what? A nursing home will be full. And when a nursing home is full, guess what? Very exciting for the nursing home. That's when it makes money, right? Not that that's what it's all about, but it is a truth. And it's a big win. That's why culture change has all the outcomes we want. You can also save money, everyone. When you make food for people that they want to eat, if you were with us yesterday, oh my gosh. And if you weren't, I highly recommend watching it. Because our colleague and guest speaker actually invented something called the Susie Q. Hot Cart. And you can take it to the table. You can show people the food. It's beautiful. And you don't waste as much food. And she pulled up this beautiful picture where, she hasn't pulled it up. It's on the slideshow. That's funny. Get this. The, there's a quote. A person who lived there says, "Could I just have mashed potatoes and a lot of gravy, please, today?" And because you have the food right there, guess what? You are honored yourselves to be able to honor people's preferences. And your nursing home saves money. And follow the money, by the way. Suzanne told us this, taught us this yesterday. That's where your money lies, to do other things, to change culture. We've just, we've learned 20, 30 years of the movement, when people eat what they ordered, or eat what they took off the buffet, in the amount they're hungry for right now, you will save money by not putting all those foods and all those drinks on someone's, hopefully you don't use trays anymore. Also, when you don't wake people up and you honor sleep, guess what? You're going to save money. Because there's no battle. You're not sending staff in to wake people up that aren't ready to get up. Did you know that with the ideas of change culture and serving the individuals who live there is actually much more efficient? You will save money. You can also start to think of it as redesign work. Yeah, guess what? You're going to help everyone get dressed. Of course you are. But when you do it on their schedule, it means that you are serving those who are waking up on their own early first, and then the next people, and then the next people. It's wonderful. And, you know, when people want to work in a culture like this, of course, you're going to save money. And all the stress of all this turnover, right? And you'll have that continuity of care that everybody wants. And then, of course, you're going to have better satisfaction by all. You're going to have fewer problems, fewer calls to the ombudsman, or the health department, or even your internal grievances, right? When you also serve real foods, okay? Real food means not supplements, okay? You're going to save money when you serve malts and smoothies. And now we're talking, right? We did this on another one, but some of us love malts, and some love shakes, and some love smoothies, right? And guess what? When I drink a malt, I, I'm sad when I hear the sound. Ready? At the end. And to be honest, I don't hear that sound a lot when people drink Ensure. In fact, guess what? You all know this. We're losing a lot of money. Because people don't usually drink the entire Ensure. Now, certainly, you might have some that love it. Fine. But what we're learning as a movement is the idea to, the idea to, hang on, I have a message. Hey, Brittany Hall, are you able to click on the invite? Are any of you able to click on the invite? Like, you know how you go into Participants? There's an invite. Can you invite someone? Or is it just me? Oh, Pam. Hey, Pam. Pam Schrecker, can you forward the email to Dawn Wareman that I just sent you? Because I'm using the invite coming right out of this webinar right now, everybody. So, if you know Brittany, no, if you know Pam, Pam could forward it to some people. Thank you, Pam. Sorry for this interruption. Keep telling me if you need help, guys, and we'll do it, okay? All right. Some of you got in from the original, so that's good. All right. Now, real foods, you're going to save money on supplements. Check this out, everyone. I got to be a part of a day camp, a youth day camp. This is my daughter in the photo when she's 12. And look what Maya said at the end of one week, hanging out with some youth. She said, "The children brought my happiness back. My depression is gone. I stopped my medication today."
Rich?
Isn't that amazing?
I'm actually in a meeting. What you got?
We don't hear that from other practices typically in this movement. But talk about, you know, real life, change culture. We tend to go, you know, not only going to comply with regs, we're going to go beyond regs. Remember that regs are just minimal, everyone. I love pointing that out. The ideas of culture change help us to go beyond minimal federal requirements. And today, I'm going to show you how all the federal requirements really support these ideas. They don't, they don't stand in a way. Also, you know, when you sleep and eat what you want, when you want, I'll get to this, but when you have more decision-making, when you are the, you are the locus of control in your own life, let's face it, that's what everyone wants. That's what you're going to want. That's what I'm going to want. When your preferences are not only known, but honored, and choice is honored, right? Just think of the better culture again. And, um, oh, Pam, 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 can you just, it was the last one I just sent. That one, the most recent, if you can, please. If we work with people who live there and not against them, let's face it, that's kind of what the institution does. Not you all, not anyone personally. People are going to thrive, of course. They're gonna, they're going to come alive. They're going to be less depressed and anxious. You know, there's a reason why people who live with dementia say, "I gotta go home." You know why? This doesn't feel like home. So, the more we keep creating, thank you, Cindy. God bless you. There's a link there, everybody, if you could share it. Oh, thank you, Cindy. Improved quality of life, even the physical benefits. And we're going to talk today about highest practicable level of wellbeing. Did you know stroking, stroking a pet reduces blood pressure? Hey, look at this, guys. We tend to treat it like, nope, our company has a policy, no pets. The end. To be honest, I couldn't live there. Because that really doesn't treat it like home, does it? Because there's so many values of pets. Now, I understand, maybe not everyone wants a pet. There's ways to work with this. And maybe you can't have one right now, for certain reasons. But I want y'all to hear this. Over 30 years, okay, of nursing home existence, we've had animals in nursing homes. You would not be the first. Many have gone before you. And there are many ways to make it work for everyone. And there are many benefits. Just want you to know that. We tend to brush it off. One time, I ran into a physician order, if you can believe that, Michael must have his dog with him wherever he lives. Wow. Michael must have his dog with him wherever he lives. We need more physician orders like that now, don't we? Yeah. Need some doctors on the line, don't we? And did you know that a companion bird, so a bird in cage, not the aviary, that can be with people, that can be a companion in their room? These birds, you guys, change people's lives. Absolutely, okay? I know a story from long ago, and I know a story from, you know, recently. And Dr. Bill Thomas of the Even Alternative tells a story in his first book of a man who had the diagnosis failure to fry. And he was asked if a bird could be in his room. He said, "Yes." And so, staff, yes, took care of the bird at first, knowing there was a potential for good to come. And sure enough, the man ended up tending to the bird himself. And guess what, everyone? Are you ready? He actually moved out into assisted living because of a bird. Wow. You don't hear that about Zoloft now, do you? All right. I'm going to roll through some regulations. And I want to show you that when these regs were new, does anyone know when that was? There's a trivia question. CMS actually gave reasons for the, the final rule, the new, the new, shoot, what do they call it? Requirements of Participation, right? And it, it actually mentions our culture change movement. "Many of the quality of life improvement changes in this final rule are granted in the concept of person-centered care and culture change. These changes not only result in improved quality of life for the resident, they can result in improvements in caregivers' quality of work-life, and, are you going, can you believe this, savings to the nursing home. Wow." And it seems like a lot of people just don't know this, right? So, I want to show you one definition. There are many definitions. But check this out. CMS defines person-centered care as, okay, it means to focus on the resident as the locus of control and support the resident in making their own choices and having control over their daily lives. Now, we have three residents with us today. And I would love to know what they think of that. Brittany, probably towards the end or in the chat box, Robyn, Cindy, and Doris, to focus on you as the locus of control and support you in making your own choices and having control over your daily lives. What do you think about that? And to be honest, everyone, it kind of is not a definition about care. Isn't that interesting? If you are the locus of control and you make choices and have control over your daily life, guess what? That's life. It's not care. Care is something caregivers give and recipients receive, right? And good care should be a given, to be honest, everyone. Good care should be a given. I, I kind of feel like, why are we still talking about care so much? Shouldn't we have moved on? Shouldn't good care be a given? You know, and forgive me, I know COVID has totally bucked things up for all of us, right? But in general, if, if you love challenges and goals, what if good care was such a given that you could really focus on the life that people are living, the quality of life? We're going to talk about that stuff today. And by the way, person-centered care was outdated language that CMS actually used. And it was already outdated when they published this. The year, did anybody guess the year? It was, it was 2016. So, we are now six years into these new regs. And even six years ago, in the culture change movement, we referred to person-directed or resident-directed. And sometimes it's care, but really, we should be saying living. Resident -directed living. Person-directed living. Oh, it's so good. Watch this. See? Person-centered what? Care. Person-directed what? Care. Resident-directed care. And look at what's missing, though. Life and living. So, I don't know, Wyoming, if you've kind of gotten this message, we've talked a lot about it over the years with my, you know, working with Wyoming. We did a lot of training on resident-directed life and resident-directed living. Another way to think of it, everyone, you might have fun just tossing these words around, is self-directed living. See, right now, you are directing your life, and so am I. That's self-directed, right? So, self-directed living is also kind of a neat way to perhaps try saying it. It's powerful. Self-directed living. I love it. How about you? And then, let me show you this. Independent, what's it called? Independent living. Assisted what? Assisted living. And then, you got to move out. And where do you go? To long-term care. Get ready, everyone. Ready? Where did the living go? Do you realize it even left the language? Shame on us, right? So, I want to invite every single person here in my voice to start talking about life and living more than care. Look at this. It would be nice if when a person moves into a nursing home, they ask him or her, "How do you want to live?" And not just all that medical stuff. You each could do that, no matter what your job is, you guys. Just look at people as people. That could be you, and that could be me. They're not patients. I would zoom over residents. They are people. And when you use language like that, it's equalizing. They are a person. You are a person. And you are in this, you know, community together. So, one thing the institution has failed us with is that we look at the nursing home through the lens of the medical care, right? It's a nursing home, skilled nursing, I can't even say the F-word, right? And we are the clinicians, and we are the professionals. And this is my, this is my professional job. And we have almost, you might even feel the pressure to use all those medical words. And, and what I just learned from the movement is, is let it go. Leaders do not succumb to the institutional pressure. And they balance it with what's normal. Isn't that funny? Like, everything we're kind of fighting against, I, I'm sorry to say it that way, but it's like a, like a big tsunami coming this way. I'm always like this little voice with a big, big waves of institutionalization and medical care. I mingle with so many, like, doctors of this and doctors of that. And, and it's hard to be a voice against it. And, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to use negative language, but join me so that it's less of a fight, you know? It's no longer that. We all get it. It's, it's normal. And isn't it ironic that we're just trying to get to normalcy? The, the, the culture change movement has used this lingo. It's not on the slide, but have fun with this. Rampant normalcy. One way to say what our culture change movement is about is to bring about rampant normalcy. So, for instance, you know, everybody, but let's just say nurses listening. The more you talk about, like, quality of life, going outside, listening to music, sleeping, not waking people up. Isn't that cool? The more you, as a nurse, talk about real and normal life, the more it will help us move away from institutional life. And that's everyone. I'm not picking on nurses, but we need nurses to actually help us put quality of life practices ahead of medications, right? We all know this. But, oh dear. Okay, I'm going to try to mute people. There we go. And now, we're going to look at a few resident rights regs. So, you've probably heard this, that your nursing home must treat each resident with respect and dignity and care in a manner and in an environment that promotes maintenance or enhancement of his or her quality of life. There it is. Recognizing each resident's individuality. Do you realize we could just do a whole webinar right on that beautiful sentence? And so, maybe take with you, what are we doing well to, to honor individuality? You know, if you check and change everyone every two hours, guess what? That's not individual. That's generic. So, are we supposed to give generic care? Are we supposed to give individual care? So, recognizing each resident's individuality. Check this out. Your nursing home must protect and promote the rights of the resident. So, notice those very strong words, everyone. Protect and promote. Do any of you know why it says that? Now, see, I've been around regs a lot. I was a surveyor. I worked at CMS in Baltimore. I trained surveyor. I've just sort of studied regs my whole career. And I, to be honest, I feel like I hear CMS sort of say this in between the lines. Nursing homes, you've been really good at telling residents what their rights are. You've been really good at posting them. And you've been really good at covering one every resident council. However, you're still missing it. You also need to actually protect their rights and actually promote their rights. So, everyone, that means all of us, every single one of you, every single me, become an advocate, no matter what your job is. Do you realize it's ridiculous that we would run to the social worker when a resident is demanding their rights, their right not to do something, or not to take a med, or something, right? We all are supposed to protect and promote rights, not just the social workers. And that includes families. And look at what CMS added to the regs six years ago. "The resident's wishes and preferences must be considered in the exercise of rights by the representative." Did you know that? That is amazing. So, no offense, maybe there's a family member on the line, but look at this. One way to think of this, everyone, is to just always reframe back to the resident, back to the person, okay? So, never ask a family member, "What do you want for your family member resident?" No. Ask family questions like this. Hey, family member, what would your mom want? What has your mom said she wants? How did your mom live her whole life with her diabetes? And so, think of it as reframing, and always, always, always going to the person. You'll never, you'll never go wrong. Now, a section called self-determination. Residents have the right to choose activities, schedules, including sleeping and waking times, healthcare, and providers of healthcare services consistent with their interests, assessments, and care plan. So, let's just kind of mull this over. The right to choose activities, and really, schedules, they kind of go together, you know? I was an activity director. I had a lot of activities on a schedule. And whose schedule was it really? I don't know. It probably wasn't even mine. It was the institutional activity schedule. Beware of that, my sisters and brothers in this field, you know? It's just something to ponder. So much of life, living in a nursing home, is scheduled by somebody else. That breakfast time, it's an arbitrary time in the morning that somebody picked. Probably none of you. It's, you know, many, many nursing homes have a breakfast time that was probably picked decades ago. It's interesting to think about. Okay, how about the bath schedule? How about the this schedule, the that schedule? So, that's really the hallmark of living in an institution, that it's all about the almighty schedule, someone called it once. And notice what I read earlier. We're trying to flip that. It should be about the people who live there, honoring them and their routines, not the almighty institutional schedule. And then, this next one is also beautiful. The right to make choices about aspects of his or her life that are significant to them. So, you know, in the chat box, guys, tell me what would be significant to you if you lived in a nursing home. Try to make yourself, just pick one thing. I know there's more than one, but for the sake of time, what comes to the top for you? And, and guess what? I'm almost getting choked up. If I had to limit it to one, that would be very hard. Because like, right now, for me, sleep and going outside are very high. And if I had to pick one, I don't know which one it would be. So, how about you? And if you need to pick two, that's okay. And, and so, a big challenge for us, you know? Can you create more choice around the activity schedule? Can you try new times? Keep in mind, it's not all supposed to be groups anyway. Can you offer more than one thing at a time? I know that's hard, but that would be an example of choice. Like, looking back on my career, what if the people who live there wanted to sing hymns on a different day than Tuesday at 2:00? I realized one day, I never asked. Isn't that interesting to think about? All right. So, Pam says music. The piano player and teacher Pam says music. And Jordan says visits from my family. Brittany wants baths, not showers. And getting to sleep when you want, being able to get up when you're ready, and not having to wait for someone to, you know, get you up. Okay, so, we are focusing on activities today, everyone. And I'm so glad, again, we have a variety of folks on the line. Because we need your help. You know, what we're seeing out there, everyone, is that groups, groups are not the answer. And for many, for decades now, how many of you have had someone say perhaps to you, "I don't do groups"? Have any of you ever had a resident say, "I don't do groups," or something like that? Cindy's got capital. Yes, that's right. And thanks you guys at Morningstar. They want to be able to be around family and dinners and go outside. Yep. Okay, so, we've all had this. "I don't do groups." Let's just ponder that. So, why the heck are we pushing groups, everyone? Now, in North Dakota, an activity director was told by one of the residents one day, "Honey, activity director, you know, we don't want all those groups. And we only go to them to make you happy." So, think about this, everyone. Now, we're putting pressure where it doesn't need to be, on people who live there to come to the planned group activities to make us feel better. Do you see how broken the system is? I want to help you all to let go of this pressure. We're going to talk about this silly pressure. Now, look at what they said they wanted to do. "We just want to make Lefsa and go to the high school games." I love this. You know why? It represents normal life, okay? Normal, normal, normal. What do normal people do on a Friday night? If you live in a little town, they go to the games, right? It's great. I live in a little town again. And I see it. And, and I get to be a part of it sometimes. And they want to make Lefsa. That's a Norwegian Swedish potato tortilla kind of thing, bread, okay? Delicious. So, fill in the blank. They just want to make tortillas and go to the fiestas, you know? The festivals, whatever it is in your neck of the woods. I see people begging for real life. And again, I'd love to know what Robyn and Cindy and Doris think about that. But we, as a profession, need to flesh this out, everyone. When did whether or not someone comes to a group become the standard? Do you realize this is a misnomer? And who decided that you should get out of your room if best? Who gets to decide that? I used to think that. I used to plan popcorn just to get a certain resident out of her room. Yay for me. Who, what, what right do I have? I'd love to ask Robyn, Cindy, and Doris. What right do I have to tell someone they should get out of their room? And you see, everyone, we, we know it's probably good, but, but we don't need to put this pressure on people. And, and what I've noticed, everyone, is when you offer real life, guess what? People are naturally going to come out of their rooms. And I don't even mean to be sneaky. Let's just offer real life to people. And it will happen naturally, okay? Now, another odd thing we do is resident refused activities. Oh, shame on her. We got to watch that, guys. No, 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 no. No, we don't have to do that. We don't have to say it that way. One easy switch of language is to use the, a softer word, the word decline. Because, look at, someone tell me, what, what do you know the person just had? If I say she declines to come, the word decline shows that she had a what? Yay, a choice. Thank you, Cindy. That's right. So, if, if nothing else, I invite you to consider the word decline. But, but more importantly, we have got to take this pressure off of people, okay? Let's see, I don't know if I have it in this PowerPoint, but there was a study that actually proved people living in institutions felt a pressure to come. And if they didn't come, they were kind of like in trouble, okay? And, and guess what? It kind of, we reveal it. How many care plans have you seen that say, says some, you know, the care plan about activities says, "Resident does not come out of her room and will not come to group activities." So, my point here is that should not be the focus. When did that become the standard? It's not. And what is the focus supposed to be? Do you know? It is my privilege to show you, tag 679 activities. This, this one very long sentence has some of what was already there and some new components, okay? So, bear with me. This long, beautiful sentence goes like this. "The, your nursing home must provide, based on your comprehensive..." The, your nursing home must provide, based on your comprehensive assessment and care plan, and the preferences of each resident, that's new, preferences and ongoing support, um, excuse me, an ongoing program to support, that's new, residents in their choice, that's new of activities. Both facility sponsored group and that would be facility sponsored individual activities. And then there should be a comma, I think, and independent activities. Those are not facility sponsored, right? So keep going, designed to meet the what? The interest of and support the physical, mental and psychosocial well-being of each resident, encouraging both independence and interaction in the community. So that line about the community is new, you know? For what it's worth, our time is short. I would suggest you give bigger and bigger chunks of time to helping people go into the community. Go to the high school games, get out of the house, go in the bus, go for rides, right? Um, and then as we open up, thank God you're, you know, there's opening up going on to be creative in, in wooing the community to your community. So if you have a coffee bar, guess what? People are going to say, let's go see grandma. If you have a playground on site, guess what they're going to say? Let's go see grandma. If you have a gift shop, let's go see grandma. If you have a restaurant where people can dine, let's go see grandma, okay? It's so exciting to become the place where people want to go. In Colorado, in a small town, a cafe closed and the nursing home became the cafe for the farmers and they would come and they would hang out at the nursing home. Okay, notice the, the focus does not say there shall be group activities. It doesn't say that. There shall be so many groups on the calendar every day. Doesn't say that. It also doesn't say there shall be a focus on problems. That is so sad. That hurt us so much. I recommend that you focus on like the word preferences more than problems and that you focus on interests more than groups. And, and maybe leave behind the word activities, everyone. To be honest, nobody really knows what it means. It means many different things. Take her to activities. Huh, that's different than there's an activity going on. Okay, what activity? You see, we refer to people, the activities like team and then the groups and then the this and the that. It's just so interesting. We got activities involved. What does that mean? So we use it for a variety of reasons and, and one thing we've learned in this movement is to just be more precise with what you mean. So what if we focused on interests? And another thing that we don't have to focus on, everyone, is this other odd word that we use, programs. Um, let's see. Oh boy, my time is so short. Oh, what should I do? I'd really love for you to hear this beautiful leader in our movement and you gotta hear this. Here we go. Um, let me, let me cue her up and tell you. She, yep, here we go. She is a leader in our movement. She's talking to leaders in culture change at an opening of the Piner Network Conference. She herself has gotten older. You're going to hear this. And, and I want you to hear how she moved into independent living and left pretty quickly. And it all has to do with real life.
And in its way has demanded as much change and growth on my part as I've ever experienced. This is how it came about just short of my ninetieth birthday. In May, I gave up my home of forty-five years and moved to an independent apartment in single generation housing. I felt the need for a little more support than was possible in my own home, which seemed large and empty without my husband and the busy family life that had always filled it. My decision-making was rational and matter of fact. But once I began to settle into my pleasing small apartment with its generous wall-to-wall window to the east and a view of the treetops, surprising, even shocking feelings beset me. They were not in regard to physical accommodations or the warm welcome from staff and other tenants, but to the unbidden critical responses that rose in me about social aspects of my new environment. I had known several people who had lived here and had visited good friends here for many years. So it was with amazement that I viewed the dining room on my first evening. Most everyone, it seemed, depended on a walker to get around. Walkers encircle the large room and at the conclusion of the meal, a procession of bent bodies slowly made its way to the elevator. It was a startling scene that suggested dependency and no sense of their own agency. And I felt emphatically that I didn't belong in it, nor did I want to be identified with it. Deep within, I rejected these signs of dependence and fostered the idea that I was different and didn't belong with people in this condition. Prejudice I didn't know I had, in fact, prided myself on not having, was laid bare. How could I, a professional geriatric social worker of forty years' experience, harbor such thoughts? I was brought face to face with the cultural prejudices concerning old age that pervade our society and had to accept that deep down, they had conditioned me along with everyone else. For now, I was joining them, the infirm old, and I didn't like it. I was emphatic in wanting to set myself apart. The first conclusion I draw from this experience is that we don't know our innermost souls until we're stripped of our book learning, posturing and our unrecognized absorption of the culture around us that says a person with manifestations of physical aging is not a beautiful human being. The second conclusion is that we've let our society really do a number on us. In advanced old age, we've let society tell us that we've finished with personal growth and development. Now is our leisure time, if we have the money to afford it. Seldom are growth and development expected to be a part of aging. Rather, it's expected that conversation will mostly dwell on the past to the exclusion of vital concern with current issues and also to the exclusion of the idea of personal growth. A third imperative that grows out of this experience is this. The generations must find a way to share daily life. Elders need the stimulation of young people. They need to know something of their hopes and dreams to offer encouragement and sometimes words of caution. And elders need relationships with middle ages, whose challenges are not so far removed from their own at that age. Children and young people need firsthand contact with elders so that old age is not a strange foreign country to them. I'm convinced that we must offer multiple generation housing, housing developments for those who don't want to be confined to one stage of life. I urge all of you to explore intergenerational housing by means of the internet. Learn about the possibilities of young and old sharing housing and neighborhoods and then introduce the people of your faith communities and other organizations to it. Educate yourselves and others about this new way of living because we belong together, not in ghettos of old age. As I live these challenging days in my new environment, I feel a need to respond to this single age culture I'm just becoming acquainted with. But my response will be empty. It'll be an empty one unless it is embedded in relationship. So I'm called first to build and respect relationships. What I see in place in the current culture is largely programmatic. A varied, varied program of activities is offered, trips to restaurants and ice cream shops, as well as places of historic interest and excursions on the lakes or the river. There are shopping trips and many in-house activities, exercise groups, current event and discussion, book discussions, bingo, special cooking times in strawberry and other fresh fruit seasons, gardening and concerts by music students. Family members and friends are welcome as special guests. With such a wealth of activities, what could be lacking? What is lacking is real life. Real life is not found in programs. Real life is in the give and take of everyday life. Our life within the walls of the apartment building or our touring bus screens us off from that give and take of ordinary life. We're turned in on ourselves. What is there to talk about except stories from times past or the trouble with the air conditioning or the weather? Suppose instead that a few of our department dwellers reached out to people in the nearby neighborhood to inquire about their needs and interests. For example, purely by chance, I learned recently that a nearby church is struggling to keep up with the growing need for food that's straining their weekly food cupboard service. Would there be a helping role for some of us? This could be an opportunity for service and an entree to new relationships and new subject matter at the dinner table. I challenge the idea that we are past the age of functioning in some capacity in our communities. Part of our sense of self-worth is bound up in the knowledge that we remain contributing community members and open to new relationships. Pioneers, I leave you with this word of caution. Beware of confusing programs with real life. Programs have their place, but life in the wide world is not programmable. Life is filled with surprises, with hope as well as setbacks, with affirming as well as unsettling experiences. As shapers and leaders of a new culture, we must be very clear that the culture we are building does not rest on programs, but on our knowing each person, valuing what each person has to give and enabling each to make her contribution. Then we will be on the side of life.
Beautiful. All right. What if we did care planning like this, everyone, where all the ADLs support what a person wants to do with their life? Um, life also comes up at this reg where you must consider the views of the resident or family group and act promptly on grievances and recommendations concerning issues of resident care and life. Isn't that beautiful? Um, some homes do daily community meetings where they involve residents and making decisions about budget, believe it or not, which juice to purchase. Um, they also discuss anything that might have come up like in a grievance yesterday. They talk about it today. The content, you know, the, the theme, not the details, which means they're dealing with, um, any problems in real time. Because of homes like this, uh, we've learned that a monthly resident council meeting is too far out. And then this is really doing life together, discussing care and life like the reg says to. I also want to draw your attention to the quality of life regs. You guys really are quality of life professionals, but we never talk like that. And did you know that CMS has brought, uh, non-compliance of this tag can rise to the level of immediate jeopardy if, um, it's an environment of pervasive disregard for quality of life? So all I mean to say there is that they've given it a higher priority, which makes sense. But think about this, you know? Think about the activity regs. Who do they go to? You guys, activity team, right? Where do nursing regs go? Nursing is in charge of those regs, right? Social services, social service regs, dining, food and nutrition, go over here. Who gets the quality of life regs? Do you realize they don't go to anyone? They're just hanging there. I believe that might be part of the problem. Maybe you could take the lead. You and social services. I, I recommend you consider purposely, intentionally becoming a quality of life team together with social services. I dare you, guys, do it. Another unknown fact in the regs is that the seven domains, the Eden Alternative identified seven domains of well-being are actually in the, the activities tag under intent. The intent of this reg is to create opportunities for each resident to have a meaningful life by supporting their domains of well-being. And there, these seven domains are identity, security, autonomy, meaning connectedness, growth and joy. Those are in the regs. Can you imagine starting to ask people what brings you joy? And I don't have time, but if you'd like to look at some of our recorded sessions with families and residents, I went into more, um, more about highest practicable level of, of physical, mental and psychosocial well-being. Uh, notice the word able. People should be, um, helped to do what they're able to do. And if they're not, did you know it's actually part of the definition of actual harm? If surveyors can prove someone's supposed to, you know, can feed themselves or walk or sing or read to other residents, that is actually actual harm. Most people don't know it. Okay, I'm getting there. And then I want to hear from you all. I just want to invite you to be more, um, more involved in the Wyoming Culture Change Coalition. Uh, we, this is, this is what we're trying to do in your state, shift from all those, uh, institutional ways of thinking to normal. Um, so come join us. We have a website at Mountain Pacific and on that website, uh, let me just show you right here. We have every webinar we've done in the last year is uploaded there. You can watch the webinars, the handouts are there. Um, I don't have time to go into language, but that's one that I would suggest. Um, we also want to thank Star Valley, South Lincoln and Granite. They're all on the line for being a part of our first year's journey. And you can hear what they did in their first year, everyone, all the culture changes they made on March twenty-fifth. And we want to thank Life Care of Casper and Wyoming Retirement Basin. They joined midway. They're going to share a little bit of their success. And I am looking for three more nursing homes in Wyoming. And we start April first. So get the, um, announcement from me and the application if you want to join us. And some of these great things could start to happen in your culture. Now, today is the ninth. Tomorrow, the special session is for social services. Invite that team member to watch and they'll hear me say some of the same things, including to consider becoming a quality of life team. Dining is this Friday. And then the next big conference session next week is, um, some great ideas on valuing and engaging team members. And there's even more. If you don't have this flyer, let me know. I can get it for you. Two big goals we have for your state is everyone that works in a nursing home learns about culture change. We need your help with that. And everyone who lives in a Wyoming nursing home does not get woken up on the institutional schedule. We use the artifacts of culture change. If you'd like to know more about that, let me know. And I think we did it. What questions might you have? I'm just going to leave some, um, leave some. I can't go over all the language, but that's part of the handout. And, and while, um, I'm taking questions, I'll upload the handout real quick here. Oh, sorry. We started late. I'm rushing. Um, any questions from anybody? Go for it. Yes. Oh, right, right. Okay, so let's see. So everyone, the recording and the handout will be on the Mountain Pacific website soon. You're welcome to email me. Um, my email should be, I think, up towards the front on the, on the first slide. And I have more information on language. If you want to email me, guys. Um, I have a back-to-back that's just language, okay? I'm, I love giving it away. So I'm hearing people want that. Oh, there's my, on the last slide too, okay? And then let me just sort of, um, give you some takeaways, okay? First of all, think about, um, also the language of meaningful engagement. That's, that's what a lot of us use instead of activities. And that can be individual. It can be in a small group, big group, right? And when people are meaningfully engaged, guess what? It has so many good outcomes. You know this. People are less depressed, less stressed. They are less bored. And my favorite actually is people don't fall as much when they're meaningfully engaged. So this is how you can bring, you know, um, things that you know about, that you're, um, experts in to, to the whole culture. Engagement equals fewer falls. I do a lot of training. I do a whole year curriculum on proactive practices to prevent falls and meaningful engagement is one of them. And you all can do that. And then I just would encourage you, what if you personally became a leader for life in your building? For real life, for normal life, for quality of life, whatever your job is, guys, I, I challenge you. Tell someone at the next meeting, you need five minutes or less and you're going to start. start to educate people more and more and more about quality of life and normal life. You're not going to see as many groups on the calendar anymore because we're going to just live life. We're going to take people outside more, we're going to take people out in the bus more. You gotta talk, you gotta flood people with best practice. I can help you with this if you want. You can remind people that the regulation is about interest, it's not about groups. You can remind people, invite people to help you figure out what is each resident's highest practicable level of physical, mental and psychosocial well-being. And oh my goodness, start talking about the seven domains of well-being. And looky there, there you go. That'll, all that will create a changed culture and every idea actually stems from a regulation. So any, any last minute questions or comments? Anybody? We have a moment, we have a whole minute. A whole minute till the next meeting. Can I hear for, oh, hey, everybody, I need, I need your help. Can you put in the chat box your level of knowledge pre and post what you just heard? That is kind of how Wyoming does evaluation and I need that for the grant. Please, please, please. And I will for sure get you guys handouts and, and the language handout if you want it. And y'all probably have to go and so do I. If Granite's on the line, I think you guys are, I'll be there in a minute. Thank you. I just need some of these, uh, scores, pre and post. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you. Any questions? Awesome. Alrighty, if you want the handout, you gotta email me, please. I don't know all your emails, although I probably do have access, don't I? Over Zoom. But if you want it sooner than later, email me first, okay? Thanks, everyone. Thank you, thank you. God bless you all. Let's change culture in Wyoming. I'm going to let you go. Thank you, thank you, thank you.